Okay, so, moving on to approval of the minutes. Did everybody get a chance to review the minutes?
Yep, I'll make that motion.
Okay, you got a first and a second. Is there any discussion or changes?
There is a typo of the last line. Well, it's fixed here though. No, it isn't. Very last line motion, and seconded to adjourn. Supposed to be the meeting, we got a toll meeting in there. That was it.
Okay. So... We have a first and a second of accepting the minutes as amended. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We have any conflicts of interest? Oh, I'm sorry. Approval of the agenda. Thank you.
No additions to the agenda. The only thing I would ask for the agenda is if you can move, uh, twelve D and twelve E up to the front. Um, oh, a correction. But, um, twelve E, D and twelve E up to the front so that Chris can get on the road, he's gotta drive. And we are actually gonna ask you to table ten A because the LSS representative could not make it tonight.
Motion approves amended.
Second.
Any discussion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now, the conflicts of interest. Hearing none, we'll move on. Public comment. Hearing none, we'll move on. Uh, what was the public hearing that's?
There's none tonight.
None tonight. So you wanna do?
Twelve D.
Those before the reports?
Yes, if we could.
Okay, so we'll move on to twelve D. Resolution twenty nineteen dash fourteen, ordering improvements.
Uh, thanks for moving me up. Um, yep, this is a, uh, resolution. It's one of the boxes that needs to be checked for the statute four twenty-nine process. So after we have the hearing, the improvement hearing, um, we need to have a resolution. That basically, it's the city saying, "We're gonna do, do the project." Ordering the improvements and ordering plans and specs, I believe, is in the, the resolution. And then the, um, the other one is approving plans and specifications. The, the draft, uh, resolution that I provided, Diane and Chris, has language in there, um, contingent upon rural development approval. We did get comments on, uh, late Wednesday afternoon. They're pretty simple. The state engineer's out for a week and a half, and I have a call into the, um, area specialist. It seems like they're moving towards, they did with the P R all, as well. But they, um, they don't require the state engineer to have final sign-off. Once they get some comments from him, they've, they've been kinda saying, "Okay, this is approved. Just take care of what he asks you to take care of." So, um, I haven't received confirmation on that, but, um, you know, if we can get that, say, Wednesday, we wouldn't have to wait till the next council meeting to put it out for bid. So that's what this resolution is saying. So long as RD's okay with it, the city's okay with us putting it out for bid. So, and that, that is also a, one of the, uh, statute four twenty-nine required resolutions.
And Chris and Diane have that?
It's in the packet as well.
Yeah.
Any, any discussion on that? Questions? You get a motion?
Make a motion approving resolution twenty nineteen dash fourteen for ordering improvements.
Second.
Have a first and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is the resolution twenty nineteen fifteen approving plans and specifications and ordering, uh, advertisement. There's no S in there. Forbid. I believe you've already addressed that, yes?
Yeah.
Do you have more on that? No?
Nope.
So we need a motion on that one as well?
Motion approve resolution twenty nineteen dash fifteen.
Second.
First and second. Any discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Make it through Lamberton?
There's some drips as high as my car.
Okay, so... We'll move on to department head reports. Whoever would like to begin.
Couple things for you, just what I've been doing, um, buying some properties. Um, I've, I've got a goal of those two properties on Second Street, three sixty-one and three forty-nine. I got a goal. Notice I said goal. Of, uh, April first, and they will be down and ready to be built on. So those are the ones right across from the park. I just wanna make sure that we go, don't go another year with those two properties sitting there across from the, the park where so many people use that, uh, that area.
What was that goal date?
Three sixty-one and three forty-nine Second Street.
Oh, the date?
The date, April first. As a goal. What are you writing down a goal for?
Holding your feet to the fire.
I wanna make sure you make your goal.
That's right. Well, you know what? And that kinda moves on to, and, 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 uh, I think Chris will vouch for this, where I think we're pretty close to now starting to, uh, um, getting some traction on some people building here in town, not only in our broad acres, but, uh, in other lots that we have here in town. We're gonna be working on that as the, the EDAs right now. Um, we've got a meeting, couple meetings this week, and, and I'm hoping to have some more news maybe in a month about, uh, maybe some, some startups. So that would be nice. Because we gotta have those. It's all right tearing things down and making the town look cleaner, but we also have startups to go along with it. Couple of other things I got going on, um, just getting used to my duties for Orchard Lanes with being the, uh, proprietor, whatever you wanna call out there. Getting used to everybody out there, getting to meet everybody, doing some of the, uh, crawled into all the little crawl spaces that are in there. So I just needed to get down there and see what was down there. Um, and then I'm also helping the city a little bit, uh, purchase not only some of the properties around town, but also helping with, uh, the future liquor store also. Any questions? Okay.
Sounds great. Thank you.
Excellent.
All right, well, I have been working on our annual report, which we are required to do every year by State Library Services. And it's a very long and kind of boring document, so I wanted to pull out some of the more interesting, um, pieces of information from that and bring them to you.
Thank you for saving us.
You're welcome. The board will have to look at it next week, though. So some of these things like visits, um, public computer sessions, reference questions, those we, um, we track through sampling, which means a couple of weeks out of the year, we count everybody who comes in the door, we count everybody who goes on a computer. We try to track who uses the internet or the wireless, that sort of thing. And then we just multiply it. So it's an estimate, but I think it's a pretty good representation. Registered users there, we have about fifteen hundred. Um, circulation was about nineteen thousand five hundred this year. Um, my goal was to increase children's circulation, and we did that, so I was very pleased there. Number of programs, we had over twelve hundred people attend, um, our programs last year or take part in programs. Um, that also includes things like winter reading programs, summer reading program. Even, they call it passive programming, which are things like our coloring desk. So we keep track of how many kids use that also during those sampling times. Then just some information about our collection, both in-house and our electronic materials that we have, um, through Plum Creek. So, um, just wanted to put that together for you. If you have any questions about any of it, just let me know.
On your children's?
Mm-hmm.
How much did it increase?
Um, I think it was about a thousand this year. And it, it had gone down the previous year, and I wasn't happy with that at all, so I wanted to get that back up, and, um, we bought a lot of new materials and tried to spruce things up in there, so.
That's great news. That's good.
Yeah.
Anybody else have any questions? Next one.
Thank you, and thank you, thank you for your great support of the library. We appreciate that.
Sorry, I was late on getting the report out to you today, but I got it on your desk for you to peruse at your leisure. Nothing really sticks out in it. Uh, talked to Redwood Ford today, and our squad is through production and ready to be shipped, so it should be weather permitting in Redwood Falls within the week. So, then it'll, uh, Redwood Falls will deliver it to our installer, and then it'll take a week to two weeks for the installer to have it fully outfitted and graphic and ready for service, so. On schedule of that. Currently advertising for officers. Application's closed on the twenty-eighth. So far, I have one application. So... If you have any questions, I'll try to answer them.
You say officers. I know you've got the full-time. That's being...
In our part-time position, I'll be open in three weeks.
Oh, he's leaving too? Oh, I didn't hear that.
So of these numbers, is there anything in particular you'd like us to look at, or?
Well, it's just a standard monthly report.
Yeah.
I just try to give you something to look at to, uh, show who's busy, and it shows kinda what times, what days are busier, and types of calls that are being handled, and if you're, you're new to our monthly reports, I always try to let you know how we compared to the year before that month, so. So you can kinda see if it's a large increase or decrease, and sometimes it's, if you're looking at the reports, it's, it's, uh, something as simple as we had a huge amount of snow emergencies in January, and now we're gonna have even more in February, so the calls look like they're up, but, you know, twenty-five of them could be parking tickets.
Okay.
So...
And how is that going, um, with the snow removal and all that, or? People staying off the road?
I commend the city shop. They're doing a very good job of keeping the streets so nice and wide, so.
I mean, it's...
People parking on it?
Yeah, parking on them, or how's that?
Carries from snow emergency to snow emergency. Last night wasn't too bad. I think we had four parking tickets.
I've seen a few, though.
Uh, we had one bad day last week where we had fourteen parking tickets, but... We try to get the message out there as much as we can, so.
Yeah, I've seen that on the Facebook posts and texts, and that's great, it's...
I've heard a lot of comments that they've been thankful for both Facebook and the texting. Now, I don't know if you're able to do the texting, like, when police officers aren't on duty? To figure it out? Yeah?
I just text it to him.
We take care of it.
Him and the on-duty, or the on-call phone. Usually one of them gets it on there, so.
I have heard good comments of both.
It's a very easy service, so.
Seems to be effective. Anybody got any questions?
Just one.
Marshall has four openings right now, and they receive ten applicants. It's kinda the state we're in right now.
Yep.
Alex and I put out, just don't they graduate like it?
Uh, yeah, May to June, yeah. So the first round of, like, this year's class taking the post-test would probably be about the first week of June. So... And so, I don't know what their numbers are this year, but usually they average about thirty students to fifty, between thirty and fifty students, I'd imagine, in the class, so.
When, I'm just familiar with what they're saying. I mean, they have to have their boards and everything, but...
Yep.
When can they apply? Can they apply while they're in school yet? Contingent that they finish, or do they usually always wait till after they've graduated?
We're looking for them to be eligible to be licensed, which means that they've graduated school and taken the post-test. Now, they could be in that lull where they don't know if they pass the test or not, as long as they're going to be eligible to be licensed by the date we want them to start. So it doesn't do any good to start somebody because if they're not licensed, they can't carry a firearm or assume any liabilities, so.
So hopefully, maybe you might have a potential of some additional candidates come May or whatever, once they've finished their program?
Yeah, if we don't get a viable candidate, we'll continue to search for them, so. It'll happen.
Do they have, like, placement service when they graduate?
No.
Like the...
Usually the, the main job source for looking for law enforcement jobs is like the pool line, the state pool line. And, um, when we posted ours, we were the thirty-second department listed on the pool line for a total of forty open positions. So, kinda give you an idea.
There's a lot of police officer jobs open right now, so we're, it's a very competitive market right now.
And a lot of them, you know, have bigger budgets than we do.
Sure. Well, anyone else?
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Thanks for the help with the snow, too.
Yeah. Has anybody heard from Dale?
What's that?
I was asking if anybody had heard from Dale, but...
Alrighty, I had a few things. Um, I guess I'll entertain any questions you have on my report at this point. Always have a few other things that, um, have happened since, and some that I didn't get put on the report that I thought of later. First off, I wanna thank, uh, Jason and Chris for filling in while I was gone for a week. Good to see everything didn't fall apart while I was gone. That was kinda nice, so. We're gonna be widening, um, streets here between Snow Falls. Just gonna pick the worst, really not gonna be a pattern, um, just kinda where it's drifted back and where they're the most narrow, and we'll start with the main, the main drags, and then, uh, move out to, you know, some of the more residential areas. Lot of cars, where you get a car on both sides of the road, it's getting pretty tight to get one car between them, so. And March isn't here yet, so, um, we're gonna try to get that, you know, it's gonna be probably several weeks, but, uh, start getting everything widened out a little bit, um, for one, so catch basins work in the spring, and two, so it's a little safer to see around corners and stuff, because some of these banks are getting real high on the intersections, too, so. Um, street, um, we've had a rough week, um, the last two weeks. We've had some bearings, wear plates, chains, sprockets. Uh, we got a plow mount to fix. The long winter's starting to wear on the equipment, and we really haven't had much time for maintenance, which is grease and go most days, but, um, we did get, uh, we had the main bearings go out in the bottom air, auger on the snowgo last week, so we ended up, we had some used ones at the shop that were still decent. We threw in for now, but looking at rebuilding that when winter's over. The other thing I had is the library. I just wanted to update you on the, I do have the specs on the sizing for the HVAC now. We'll be moving toward finalizing the specs this week. It sounds like the forecast's gonna be decent till the end of the week, so should be able to accomplish that pretty easily, so. Any other questions?
Something I've had people ask me, Shane, maybe you can address it. With all the snow. Is pushing snow from one piece of property across the street to somebody else's property permitted?
Actually, a state statute. Um, against that, and we're seeing a lot of it, and some of it's starting to cause issues. Trying to widen streets.
Notice on the streets, and trying to widen them also, notice the two out to the substation out there where it's piled up high along the west side. I don't think if somebody had to get a service truck into that backside.
All coming out of Delaware General.
Try to get a service truck, and they wouldn't be able to get it in there, so.
No, we could probably post something as a reminder to people.
For? For that?
Yeah.
Well, for pushing snow from one person's property across the right-of-way onto another.
I've actually had a couple people call and, and talk about that, and the, the key is, and I know you guys know this, but I wanna put it out for them, is that the public works, people that are out plowing are not going, you know, they don't ticket people, they don't, they're not doing it, and I, one complaint said, "Well, I'm waiting for the public works guys to take care of this." They're not gonna. Those complaints need to get filtered through the police properly, and it's, it's a, they're breaking the law. That's who takes care of that, so, um, we, we don't purposely go out and look for people that are plowing across the street because it's just, it's unmanageable at that point. But if people have a complaint, they need to get it to the police department. Um, and hopefully, maybe the two that I've talked to, maybe one of them are, one of them that maybe have talked to you, and it should be taken care of, because Jason's actually taking care of it, and...
I just wanted to make sure it was addressed, and I wanted to make sure it was correct, and that it is not an acceptable practice.
Yep, and I know the county, county sent some letters out, too, I mean, rural, rural people that do that. It, you hit that with a wing or something, it'd easily throw you right off the road.
Yep.
And ours, I mean, you get, you get someone that pushes theirs across the road, well, now the snow isn't gonna jump up onto the boulevard there, so it's gonna carry it, and it's gonna end up in the next guy's driveway, so it's not helping, helping the neighbors out either.
Compounds problems, is all it does. Tears up equipment.
Yep, so...
So then what should they be doing with it?
Keep it in their yard.
Keep it on the property where it's well-ended.
Yep.
That's all I had. Thanks for the hard work.
You bet.
Yeah, I really appreciate, uh, all the hard work you guys are doing, and please forward that to the rest of the guys as well.
Yep, will do. Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions or comments? All right, thanks, Shane.
We'll do, uh, liquor store one, if that's okay?
Okay.
Um, so liquor store, they're very excited, all, all the staff's very excited about moving to the highway location. Uh, our move actually made the MMBA newsletter, which is kinda cool. It's nice to be in there for positive reasons. Uh, the beer reps and some MMBA people have talked about when we do move, they'll help us with strategically lining some things up, and, and even help us move product when that time comes. So that's pretty cool. There's a tasting event that'll be scheduled for March fifteenth from three to seven P M, similar to ones in the past. Working on training some of the staff. Councilmember Teague's had brought our attention some training opportunities for some of the staff to better verse themselves in some of the products, especially wine is one of the things that they need to concentrate on. So that's, that's going well. There's a event at the Capitol talking about some legislative stuff with some various speakers and stuff that the manager is going to attend, and she says if you, any of you have any questions, please let her know.
What was the time on the tasting again? Was that a?
It is March fifteenth from three to seven P M.
Anybody have any questions or comments for the liquor store report? Okay.
We don't have one, uh, administrative report for the fire department tonight, so, um, I'll make sure he gets that to you. I'll go on to mine. I, multiple meetings, some snow removal notification. Shane, myself, and Chief Lick D sat down and kinda went over the process to kinda clarify some stuff after we got some direction from you guys. Vast, we did the annual account renew, review, making a few changes to some things to help, um, cut some costs. Department head meetings, FEMA site inspections, we've had a couple of those take place, where they come and look at various things that were, that we have on our, uh, property damage inventory. Planning commission meeting, EDA meetings, another FEMA site inspection. City council, police commission meeting, uh, and then Jeff didn't mention, but we went to Pipestone and looked at, Pipestone has a very unique process in how they handle blighted properties. I shouldn't say it's unique, but it's very effective. That'd be the word to use for it. Jeff and myself and a couple other reps went to that. FEMA site visits and a couple other things that had happened. We did get a new FEMA director, or a new FEMA, um, representative assigned to our city. Ours left. I don't think that she'll be back. So it's not like starting from ground zero, but it's, it feels like it a little, but there, our, our new rep is very, very well-versed and very experienced, so that, that's definitely helping. Some stuff coming up. We got a two thousand nineteen bond review that we're working on, and we're preparing for the auditor's site visit, which will be April first through the fourth. Flood, we're still, the damage inventory is now complete and uploaded. They're now auditing each individual portion of our damage inventory, and site inspections will be ongoing coming up. Upcoming events, we have the local government workshop. I handed you guys a flyer, um, with the new proposed date. We got snowed out on the last one. Uh, watershed management meeting is going to be in hopefully early March. FEMA mitigation, we're gonna start, uh, processing some of the mitigation efforts. They had to get through the property damage portion of it first, and then we can go through the mitigation stages. Community risk reduction in rental housing, that's a class that myself, Fire Chief Shane, and Clay, uh, from the building inspection are gonna go to. And then Shane and myself have an FAA facilities meeting coming up, and tomorrow is Sanford Consumer Council. Other than that, business as usual. Any questions?
I'll let, oh, Shane's compliments there, and congratulations. Thanks for helping out with the snow removal, you and Jason both. Appreciate that.
Yep.
Kid in the sandbox is kinda fun.
I get to, I have a big toy.
But speaking of that, have we looked at, I mean, it's been the topic of how much snow we've been getting, and we're running out of places to put it, but eventually this stuff is gonna melt and thaw. Have we been looking at possible issues with that and how to mitigate those?
Where it's gonna go. Yeah, well, so nobody's got a crystal ball that's gonna tell us how it's gonna melt and thaw.
Great.
But realistically, we're gonna have to rely a lot on Shane's historical knowledge of where does it melt and where does it go? And, you know, he has strategically been putting it in places where he knows that it can go. There are some things that they'll be doing coming up, and I'm probably speaking for you, or I'm probably let you take it over, but, um, you know, they, they snowblow some certain areas and things like that to help flow water to certain areas that they want it to go, so.
Do you have anything you wanted to add to that? Okay.
Uh, coming up in March, all, all the emergency managers for the county are getting together to pre-plan for the snow melt, so.
Okay, great.
Um, we've, in fact, today I actually ordered, uh, two to three thousand sandbags just to have on hand in case people are gonna need them, so.
Awesome.
So there is a meeting coming up of all the emergency managers, which we'll be attending coming up in March, so.
Outstanding. Thank you. Yeah, I know we can't see the future, but I would just wanted to make sure that we were looking at it and thinking about it, and...
With, within town, we don't see too much. It's gonna be more out of town.
Um, what we see is, you know, if we get a, a catch basin that's subject to freeze thaw over the winter, you know, we'll end up jetting, um, storm sewer lines and stuff to break the ice out. Um, we deal with that, you know, about every other year. So we're gonna have some of that, and then the biggest thing is, you know, we get these roads widened, some catch basins exposed, so when it does melt, it can get to the catch basins and out. And it might be interesting on, with all the ravines as full as they are, if it's gonna actually flow, but I'm sure the water's flowing underneath it all winter, so I would hope for the most part it should be fine, but it's gonna be a mess. Um, you know, in town it has a way, place to go, because it's melting slow enough that, you know, the infrastructure can take it, but if we get a rain or something with all this snow, then that's when we're really gonna see some issues. I'm actually gonna meet with, um, Dale and I are gonna talk to Pear, um, he was asking questions about what the spring's gonna look like as far as snow melt and stuff like that, he, he wants to do a story on that, so, meeting with him on Wednesday, so.
Cause initially, the ground's still frozen, so.
Ground is actually not frozen.
It's not.
Other than in the roadways, cause if we get out, um, you know, if we moved a, you know, if it's two, two feet deep or deeper, you move that with a snow blower and you're leaving tracks in the grass underneath, so it's, it's soft, and then, um, Al was sick a few weeks back, and I did some utility locates for him, and I could push the wire flags in just fine, no issue. So hopefully that'll help, it's not gonna help our sanitary sewer, but it'll help, you know, cause the ground's still open, water has a place to soak in, but.
Okay.
Is it on your master plan that, you know, you bring that up, Shane, um, those properties along Highline Road that historically flood because their small culverts and ditches are full to, so we clear some snow first for them, or?
Yeah, we're gonna try to get ahead of that this year and clean it out for them, because they end up being our three taxpaying people on the wrong side of the Highline Road, so. Um, just make a pass, so when the I think it's a slough or something to the, to the west of them, ends up flooding and comes, comes in and floods out Highline Road there, and ends up getting in their basements and stuff, so usually it's four o'clock on a Friday, they call and we. But yeah, we'll probably end up, once we, we see a thaw on site, we'll probably, uh, go out there and try to get ahead of it a little bit, so.
Alright. Thank you. Thanks, Chris. We have anything else?
For department head.
Alright. Petitions, requests, and communications, um, the LSS Senior Nutrition Program Site Use Agreement, you wanna table that?
Yeah, that'll have to be tabled to March eleventh, is that the date? March eleventh's meeting.
Need a motion for that? Nope, okay.
You actually already approved it when you approved the agenda as amended.
Yep. Proposed plan for sidewalks, snow removal.
So the planning commission, in part of its sidewalk discussion, asked about snow removal procedures for sidewalks, if it was, uh, something the city could do, and if it was something that, uh, there are some cities that do it, they have some pretty, for lack of better words, sophisticated equipment for doing it, because it's, it's really hard on equipment to do it. Uh, spoke with Shane, and we kinda developed a plan on what it would take for the city to do it, and equipment wise, and this memo that you have in your packet is a breakdown of it. Essentially, it comes down to the first year, we'd have to purchase the equipment, uh, and then we would budget for replacement of that equipment, uh, for subsequent years coming on. The initial year would cost ninety-six thousand, six hundred and thirty dollars to do it, uh, subsequent years would be fifty-four thousand, uh, eighty-three dollars. It comes down to the first year being about a hundred dollars per utility customer, and the subsequent years being about fifty-six dollars per utility customer, but that, that's not, everybody owns a sidewalk, that's every utility customer, so someone out on Greenwood that doesn't have a sidewalk would be paying for someone that does have a sidewalk. It's, uh, I, in the interest of fairness, I think you need to know that.
And that's per year, yes?
Correct. That's what taking a part-time position, making that person full-time, the reason for the, the wage, why that looks higher than just a part-time is because, uh, once you go from part-time to full-time, there'd be a benefits package that would be added to it as well, so.
So this thirty-six thousand includes the benefits?
Correct, and it includes their wages that they're getting half of now, you know what I mean? So there's an, a fifty percent, approximately fifty percent increase in wages, but then, once they become from part-time to full-time, that would add a benefits package to it as well, so that's why it reflects as that. We'd be taking a part-time employee that works in the summer now is currently budgeted for creating them into a full-time employee.
So how much snow causes us to go plow the sidewalks?
That's something, since we don't do it now, that'd be something that would be a determination factor, I, I would, we would have sidewalks, because people are walking on it, would require a lot more maintenance and a lot more where we might not plow, Shane, what triggers a plowing event in your opinion?
Generally, two plus inches, but.
And a sidewalk would probably be a half inch to an inch because of tripping hazards, things like that, that, as you can see on here, but I put in there that it would be eight thousand dollars for salt, and that doesn't change from year to year, because we, you would have to put salt out as you do this, just to remove any liability, once you start clearing it, you know, you're, you're setting yourself up for, did I do a good enough job on it?
There's a few things I'd like to add to, um, I guess just concerns looking ahead on if they did, uh, pursue this. Tree heights on sidewalks, um, I know a lot of the trees are gonna have to get cut up, hired to get equipment through, and then, um, where you get a tree next to a sidewalk and it heaves the sidewalk, those are gonna also be issues that will need to be addressed, otherwise.
Tear up equipment.
Yeah, we're gonna have some issues with equipment.
But it, it's an expensive proposition, I, I don't know if I'm supposed to say this out loud or not, but neither Shane or myself are supportive of doing this.
Well, and that's just the obvious factor, if you take in the fact that somebody just seeded their yard, the guy missed a sidewalk, like we do when we're widening once in a while, and you tear up their yard, that's another unbudgeted expense.
Yep.
And then don't we take over insurance liability for sidewalks then too?
Yep.
Cause today it's the homeowner, isn't it?
They just shoveled their driveway, and now you go by and you blow a sidewalk, and hope you got a little on the driveway, and I think it's gonna cause more problems than it's definitely gonna solve.
And there are, I, I think that what we're looking at here is we're looking at changing the entire way we do everything for a few violators. I think we should concentrate on the violators that are not taking care of their sidewalks, and perhaps change our process of how we approach those, some, similar to how we mow lawns, maybe we need to send someone out the day after the snowfall to go snow blow a couple of those, you know, onesie twosies, but then charge them accordingly, and charge them, the idea of a fine is to get someone to not do it again the next time. Not how much did it cost us to do it, it needs to cost a little more than what it cost us to do it, so they don't want us to keep doing it.
Is the ordinance today twenty-four hours, or is it forty-eight? That you're supposed to have it cleaned?
So how it reads now is you have, whoever the complaint it is has to have a written complaint to the city administrator, and after that, city administrator has to send a letter to the property owner. And then after that, they have twenty-four hours, um, to do it, and then after that twenty-four hours, then the administrator tells us that we can go move it, and then we have to go back and bill it afterwards, so.
And that's per, that's per event, that's not per season, per event. Yeah, unless it's an abandoned property, well, or a, just like mowing where nobody's around, then you could do that.
If you change your ordinance accordingly, yeah.
I feel like we need to look at our snow, sidewalk, snow removal ordinance, and I can get some other examples and reach out to some colleagues and stuff, and try and get us dialed in a little bit better on that, and start some enforcement with that, and there are some, you know, granted, the public works department is overly tasked right now, but you know, like a week like now, they could go out and do some of this.
Onesie twosies wouldn't be a problem, but you start getting a few blocks of it.
And again, that's where it's gonna take some teeth, that, you know, we're gonna have to look at it being a fine, so that people don't wanna do it, if you make it so that it's cost-effective for them to just have the city do it, that's what they'll do.
That's one of the instances too, where you could have a, have somebody contracted for it, and then the city is responsible for collecting, so you contract somebody to do it, you collect it with your fees or whatever on the backside, but if you have to put it on the taxes, put on the taxes, but you know it's gonna get done, it's not gonna cost any extra employment from city employees, it's not gonna tear up city equipment. If you find somebody willing to come by and say, yeah, I'll, I'll do them sidewalks for X, the city charges Y to, to manage the program, and, and it gets done. So it, that, that bears some further discussion to come up.
But yeah, I think that's a good idea, get some more ideas, and if we have to adjust our ordinance.
I just think it makes more sense to look at our ordinance and what we need to put a little more teeth into it than to sit here and to expect every homeowner to foot the bill for the people that have the sidewalks, and then we are, we're opening ourselves up to the liability, I mean, the damage with that can be done to the grass of the property owners, because they will expect the city to repair it, and if they're concerned about that, they're not gonna want just a little seed spread on there and saying it's good, they're gonna want, look in what it, their grass usually looks like.
I want it returned to.
Yeah, and then we're sitting here, okay, so then we're talking with churches and everything that have funerals all days of the week and times of the day, if we're responsible to remove the snow on the sidewalks, how do we manage that? I think one person to think we're, is gonna do the sidewalks of snow removal, it's not like lawn mowing, where if a grass doesn't get cut by five PM, you can go and mow the lawn the next day, you know, snow removal, it's, it's an ongoing beast, especially this summer, or this winter.
This is strictly.
Summer, yeah, thank God, it's on summer.
This is strictly a guess, you know, we, we looked at the map for sidewalks, and we said, do you think you could get it all done in one day? Yeah, I think with the right piece of equipment, I mean, that's, cause until you actually do it, there is, uh, there's no one in the world that could give you an accurate estimate on it.
And you've got, how many people, when you do a, a snow event like you're removing snow today, how many people you got out there working?
All of them.
Well, yeah, so that's a number.
There's not one spare person at Public Works right now, this could not be done with the staff we currently have, at all.
So you got, you got your public work in, you got your contract haul, and the contract hauler, so what, to expect one person with one piece of equipment to do all the sidewalks in the same amount of time? That's.
You'd have to have a heavy piece of equipment, that's why the.
I don't, I don't think it's realistic to expect one person to do all that.
I just don't think it's a, an expense we put on to all the property owners right now, if we're gonna add in expenses for property owners, we need to look at priorities, and I just, I, I in the conscious could not say snow removal for the people that aren't doing it right now, justifies adding it on to all the property owners. There's options out there, if people don't wanna remove their snow, there's private people you can hire, you know?
Yes. Well, to be fair, I've, I've heard.
I'm not, no.
To be fair, I've heard some positive comments about that, about, you know, the city doing the snow removal, so I think it was worth looking at, but, um, when you analyze it and really look at the cost, I don't think that it's, uh, really viable to do, um.
Plus, if we change our ordinance and we enforce it, and that doesn't work, we could re-review the, this, you know, I mean.
We could come back to it if we had to, yes.
Don't throw it away.
I think we have some other options first.
Agreed.
Well, and I think review ordinances are orders, is, along with the nuisance ordinance as well. Um, you know, we're talking about cleaning things up, we need to have some teeth there as well, so.
And that was part of our visit to Pipestone, was to dig into some of that stuff and, and find out what's working in other cities, not just create a bunch of rules that are unenforceable, to actually, you know, find out what's motivating people to do that stuff, and, and they're, they're running into the same thing with sidewalks too, so.
Well, cause we wanna work with the community, we don't wanna come in with a big hammer and, you know, try and.
Well, and the key to understanding this is, the reason why we're even talking about it is because other residents that are taking care of their sidewalks are complaining about sidewalks that are not being taken care of. So it's not like this is just the city putting their thumb down, this is the masses of the city saying, we want these thirteen individuals that are not taking care of their sidewalks to start taking care of them.
I think that's a legitimate, legitimate request if that takes place.
Well, as people see Joe blow down the street not do their sidewalk, they're like, well, why do I have to do mine, and so I think the longer we let this go, the the worse it's gonna get, so I think we just need to look into that ordinance and get moving on that.
I'll take that as a tasking to dig into that ordinance and try and propose to, uh.
Yeah, can we, can we look at that next meeting? Okay. Alright, so then moving on. We don't need a motion or anything on that either, it's just discussion, so, approval of private bottle club license at the Tracy Eagles.
I'd move approval pending, receiving all the fees and necessary paperwork.
Second.
Here we have first and a second, is there any discussion? Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, any opposed? Motion carries. Approval of setup license for Tracy lanes?
I'd move approval as long as all the fees are paid.
What, what is the setup license?
They just pour the pop.
You bring your own.
You bring your own bottle in.
Okay, oh, got it, setup.
And he sells three two beer.
Right, okay, I'm thinking setup like setting up your business, I get it.
Nope.
They got some bowling shoes that'll fit you over there, you're gonna go over there and try.
Thank you. So, um, we have a first and a second on that, is there any other discussion, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carry. Hire aquatic center manager.
So we advertised for the position for the aquatic center manager, we got one application, which was Shannon Benson, who was a previous year's manager, um, for quite a few years back, uh, she did a fantastic job in two thousand and eighteen, and I, I personally would recommend that you reappoint her as a pool manager for the two thousand and nineteen season. She has asked for the amount that we budgeted for, which was the same price as last year, for the manager's salary. Essentially, nothing would change. We, we did, uh, disband the aquatic center board, as, as you know from before, and myself and Shannon and a couple of the office personnel here will sit down, go over some things, and then, um, we, we currently are advertising as well for the assistant manager positions, desk positions, and in the lifeguard positions right now. And between Shane, myself, Shannon will go through and hire accordingly, but I would ask that, I, I should say, if, if you choose to appoint her.
I'd make the motion to hire Shannon for the aquatic center manager.
Here we have a first and a second discussion.
Is it necessary? This was always in the past was handled by the administrator, the hiring and firing of employees is the administrative function.
The employees, I, I would consider the manager to be in a, in an appointed position, and I think that that's appropriate to bring that to. The employees underneath the manager, assistant manager, and below, I feel, should be handled with the pool manager you appoint, um, and the administration staff.
Just a change, and that's, makes sense to me, then.
And this is, uh, an annual appointment? We do this every year?
Yep.
I would say so, yes.
Okay, any other discussion questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. On sale kitchen requirements.
So I put a memo in your packet, a couple of you have actually. So I put a memo in your packet, a couple of you have actually talked to me about this, some of the kitchen requirements for on-sale liquor establishments in, in the city of Tracy. There's a couple of spots where it shows up in section 512, it talks about food prepared and served for consumption on the premises as being one of the requirements for regular on-sale license. Later on, it talks about in section 5.14 subdivision 10, places ineligible for license, a restaurant with less than fifteen hundred square feet, so that's one of the requirements, it would have to be fifteen hundred square feet or larger. And then in the terminology, under D, a restaurant is something, the consideration of a restaurant is some, a place that serves meals with seating not less than seventy-two guests at one time, and the meals are regularly prepared on the premises and served at tables to the general public. This was brought up in discussion about, some of it had to do with the liquor store with the on-sale. I think the Tracy Eagles Club felt a part of this. It's basically very vague terminology as far as what is a kitchen requirement. So the question proposed would be, do you want to continue with the kitchen requirement? And if so, should we dial that in a little better as to what a kitchen requirement is?
I think we should remove it. It's like if somebody wants to open a bar in town and just be a bar, why would we not want that?
I think the reason it was a kitchen requirement before is the, the city was running you on sale, didn't want any competition that wasn't going to provide extra services than what they are not providing, so that has now been removed. So I would actually go so far as to, once you figure out what the terminology is, call for a public hearing to have it removed from that ordinance.
Okay, I'll go through the terminology then, and I'll review it with the city attorney as far as removing the term restaurant from anything to do with an on-sale liquor establishment, and then propose those changes to you in a public hearing setting.
Restaurant with kitchen, yeah, and kitchen.
Okay.
Legal issues. Call for public hearing, change city code.
Can I, do we want to set that public hearing date now?
Oh, we can.
Do we want it for the 11th, or do we want it, would we have it, would you be able to have it ready for the 11th?
Oh, I think so. I don't think that'd be a problem.
We don't have anything else, do we?
Not that I'm seeing here, other than a public hearing for the non-residents, you could do them both.
Do, do one at 6:45 and one at 7:00?
Yeah.
Do you want to?
Yeah, we could do that. So I'd make, I'd make a motion then to do a public hearing on changing definitions of kitchens and restaurants as regard to on-sale locations for money, March 11th at 6:45.
You have a motion on the floor? Got a second? Questions, discussions? Motion carries.
Do we actually vote on that yet, or?
What's that?
Did we vote on that, or we just got the motion, a second?
On the, on sale kitchen requirement, or?
Yeah, we voted on it.
Okay.
Well, yeah, you'll vote on it after the public hearing.
At that time, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, we just passed the hearing thing, setting that up.
Yep.
Okay, so call for public hearing, change city code to section 9 dot 20 subsection to allowing non-resident business owners to be on planning commission.
Make a motion to set up a public hearing for the 11th of March at 7:00 PM.
Got a motion on the floor, and get a second?
Second.
Okay. Discussion, questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Resolutions. Resolution 2019-11, amend fee schedule for fire department.
This is a formality, a follow-on to the fee schedule changes that you approved. We now have to do it through resolution.
Okay. I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution 2019-11.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Resolution 2019-12, RD and WIF, with?
With.
With matching grant forms.
So this has to do with some of the state funding that comes with the water infrastructure funding, it's a matching grant that comes from the state, has to do with our phase three, or phase three projects that we have going on. This is just a resolution that, you know, commits the city to applying for it.
Make a motion to approve 2019-12.
One second.
First and second discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Resolution 2019-13, declaring March 2019 colorectal cancer awareness month. And that was a, a request we got from Sanford, yeah?
Yeah, it's just acknowledging that the month of March is colorectal cancer awareness month. There'll be a notice put in the paper, we'll have, blue is the color for it, so there'll be some blue lights out at the hospital. It's just to bring awareness to it. They just wanted to know if we could have a, what's the word I'm thinking of?
Proclamation?
Proclamation from the mayor in support of it.
Okay. So now, do we need a motion and approval for a proclamation? Yeah, okay. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve resolution 2019-13.
First and second, any discussion, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. D and E, we've covered previously. Thirteen consent calendar, municipal accounts payable.
I'll make a motion to approve the municipal accounts payable without breakthrough beverage and the municipal accounts receivable.
First and second discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Breakthrough beverage.
I didn't see any checks written to them.
What's that?
I didn't see any checks written to breakthrough.
There may not be.
You got to do them all this time. That's a month's worth, though. I would almost think that there's one in there for sure. If, if you do it, and there's one not in there, it's not going to affect anything. He's not getting extra.
I don't get any, how's that?
All right, can I get a motion?
So move.
Can I get a second? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. Unfinished, oh wait, municipal accounts receivable.
I did that.
Okay. Unfinished business. None? Okay, moving on. New business?
None.
None? Mayor and council communications.
Up to you guys.
Got nothing.
All right. And need a motion to close the meeting?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting adjourned.